First order of business is a call to, I'm sorry, to the roll call, please.
Yes. Chairperson Medina?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Lomali?
Present.
Commissioner Morales?
Present.
Commissioner Cuevas?
Present.
And we do have a quorum tonight, and we're going to proceed with the items on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is Corrections to the Agenda.
Good evening, Mr. Chair members of the Commission. There are no corrections to the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Thank you so much. Next item would be the Public Comment.
Mr. Chair, we'll go ahead and read that. At this time, the public may address the Planning Commission on any items listed on the agenda, including non-agenda items that are within the Planning Commission's subject matter jurisdiction. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from acting or entertaining extended discussion on a topic that is not listed on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Please show courtesy to others while providing public comments and direct all comments to the chairperson. Thank you.
Thank you. No public comment?
We do have two speaker cards for the public hearing items, both two and three.
Thank you. Do we need to close public comments?
It would be appropriate at this time to go into Staff Communications. And just to confirm, there are no staff communications for tonight's meeting. So I think it's appropriate to call for a motion for the minutes.
Gotcha. In that case, can I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting held March 4th, 2025?
I'll make a motion to approve meeting minutes for March 4th of 2025.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Of course. Chairperson Medina?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Lomali?
Aye.
Commissioner Morales?
Aye.
Commissioner Cuevas?
I will abstain since I was not here.
Thank you. And motion passes.
Thank you. The next item would be the continued public hearing for the conditional use permit to allow the onsite sale of full-line alcohol beverages in alcohol license type 47 for the onsite consumption in conjunction with a restaurant for the property located at 516 West Whittier Boulevard.
Mr. Chair, item two is a continuation item from the meeting held on March 4th. And Grace Hayashi will present a report based on the direction received from the Commission during that meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission and the public. The item before you is a continued item from the March 4th Planning Commission meeting for a request for a conditional use permit to allow the onsite sale of a full line of alcohol, a type 47 license, for onsite consumption in conjunction with the restaurant for Monabella Public Market for the property located at 516 West Whittier Boulevard on behalf of the property owner, Yao Pan. Per the Downtown Specific Plan Land Use Table 4.6, it has these restaurants, which is permitted by right in the Main Street Zone. For the alcohol sales use on and off-sale outlets, it requires a conditional use permit per the Downtown Specific Plan, which is the reason for the CUP request. The project site is located within an existing standalone, single-story building located on the cross streets of West Whittier Boulevard and North-South Sixth Street. The building is located on a lot size of approximately 6,500 square feet. The building is approximately 6,450 square feet. The project site is located within downtown Monabella within an existing commercial building on Whittier Boulevard. The project site is zoned Main Street, surrounded by other Main Street Zone properties to the southeast and west, and downtown edge zone properties to the south. The immediate surrounding land uses are Main Street, which is consistent with the commercial designated land use and will not have an adverse impact on adjacent or abutting properties. The slide before you is the proposed interior layout of the project site. There is one Patron entrance on West Whittier Boulevard. Monabella Public Market will consist of seven different kitchen units, providing different cuisines. There are 94 Patron seats, including 20 within the patio dining area, and 74 in the main dining area and bar seating. The bar seating is not separate from the main dining area seating, and a full menu of food is available throughout all seating areas. The restaurant will have a 12-by-6 stage, providing live music performances, featuring a variety of bands to enhance a customer experience. The proposed business hours will be from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday. And the surrounding businesses, like the other surrounding businesses, this proposed business is proposing to utilize the surrounded public parking lots owned by the city of Monabella. Along Whittier Boulevard and the north and south cross streets within the downtown area, on-street parking is typically provided. Only onsite consumption is requested through the CUP, and no off-site sales are being proposed. The sale of alcohol will remain ancillary to the main function of the restaurant, being food preparation and meal service. Per the Department of ABC guidelines, all restaurant staff involved with the sale of alcohol will be required to complete an authorized responsible beverage service program to be trained how to sell alcohol safely and responsibly. A condition of approval has been included for this project. The project site is located within Census Tract 530.01, which permits five on-sale license types and three off-sale license types. This Census Tract currently has five on-sale license types and no off-sale license types. By state law, ABC may only grant a limited number of alcohol licenses based on a per Census Tract quantity, meaning that only a certain number of license types are granted in any given Census Tract area to avoid undue concentration of alcohol sales. As a result, it does not guarantee that the approval of PC 2025-0015CUP does not guarantee that the applicant will receive an alcohol license from the state. As the sole alcohol licensing and enforcement agency, ABC will ultimately determine the appropriate license types and requirements at the proposed project site. There is also another active alcohol license adjacent to this property license, but it's listed in a separate Census Tract per the Department of ABC. On February 20th, 2025, the public hearing notice was mailed to owners within the 300-foot radius and mailed to all occupants within a 500-foot radius from the exterior boundaries of the subject property. And on that same day, the public hearing notice was published in the Daily Journal, Whittier Daily News. The proposed project is considered a project per the SEQA definition. The project is categorically exempt from SEQA per Class 1 of Section 15301 relating to existing facilities. Per the previous Planning Commission meeting on March 4th, staff was requested to provide additional information regarding parking within the Downtown Specific Plan due to increased traffic concerns. Staff conducted a mini-parking study over the last week to provide additional information regarding the availability of parking at the three city-owned parking lots for the downtown businesses as well as the on-street parking. The Downtown Specific Plan mentions specific parking standards, highlighting the use of on-street and off-street parking. In Goals and Policies, Section C, Moving People of the Downtown Specific Plan, it states that downtown parking options include on-street parallel parking and public and private parking lots. These parking options are strategically located throughout the downtown area to provide convenient access to the various amenities, providing opportunities for the community to park only once and enjoy the downtown area on foot. The city currently owns and operates three off-street parking lots that could be used. Approximately a 52-space lot north of Whittier Boulevard between 10th and Spruce Street. Approximately a 69-space parking lot south of Whittier Boulevard between Monabella Boulevard and 7th Street, also known as Parking District 2. Approximately a 135-space lot north of Whittier Boulevard between Monabella Boulevard and 6th Street, also known as Newmark Mall. And this totals 256 parking spaces. Along both Whittier Boulevard and the north and south cross streets within the downtown area, on-street parking is typically provided. This parking is un-metered and generally has two-hour time limits. With the plan, these on-street curb parking spaces will be dedicated to short-term parking, such as with 30-minute parking limit along major commercial areas, with long-term parking accommodated at the city-owned off-street parking facilities. Land Use Table 4.6 of the Downtown Specific Plan has restaurants as a permitted use by right within all zones of the Downtown Specific Plan. And lastly, in Chapter 4.8, it mentions off-street parking is utilized for all required parking per use required. The mini-parking study was completed over a five-day period. It began Tuesday, and it went through Thursday during the week for the weekday. Staff went to each of the three city-owned parking lots and counted the amount of available parking spots at different time slots. Staff also went over the weekend, on Friday and Saturday, to gather the parking spaces available during what was considered the busier days and times. We established timeframes that are considered peak hours, which was approximately 12:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m. during the weekdays, and then mid-afternoon on the weekends. The next slides before you will be the available parking spots at the Newmark Mall, which consists of approximately 135 parking spaces north of Whittier Boulevard between Monabella Boulevard and 6th Street. This parking lot is closest to the subject site, being 600 feet away from the subject property, and approximately a two-minute walk. So on this day, this was Tuesday, March 11th, at 12:00 p.m., 45 available parking spots out of 135. Tuesday, March 11th, at 5:00 p.m., 75 available parking spaces out of 135. Wednesday, March 12th, at 12:30 p.m., 70 available parking spaces out of 135. Wednesday, March 12th, at 5:00 p.m., 67 available parking spaces out of 135. Thursday, March 13th, at 12:30 p.m., 50 parking spaces available out of 135. Thursday, March 13th, at 5:00 p.m., 56 available parking spots out of 135. And then Friday, March 14th, at 6:00 p.m., 47 available parking spaces out of 135. Saturday, March 15th, at 3:30 p.m., 18 parking spaces available out of 135. So this is the city-owned parking lot number two. It's approximately 69 spaces between Monabella Boulevard and 7th Street, and is approximately 800 feet away from the subject site and about a four-minute walk to the proposed business. Tuesday, March 11th, at 12:00 p.m., 46 spaces available out of 69. Tuesday, March 11th, at 5:00 p.m., 58 parking spaces available out of 69. Wednesday, March 12th, at 12:30 p.m., 39 parking spaces available out of 69. Wednesday, March 12th, at 5:00 p.m., 51 parking spaces available out of 69. Thursday, March 13th, at 12:30 p.m., 50 parking spaces available out of 69. Thursday, March 13th, at 5:00 p.m., 57 parking spaces available out of 69. Friday, March 14th, at 6:00 p.m., there were 62 parking spaces available out of 69. Saturday, March 15th, at 3:30 p.m., 66 parking spaces available out of 69. The last city-owned parking lot is approximately 52 spaces north of Whittier Boulevard between 10th Street and Spruce Street, and is approximately 0.3 miles away from the proposed business, and is a seven-minute walk. On Tuesday, March 11th, at 12:00 p.m., there were 19 spaces available out of 52. On Tuesday, March 11th, at 5:00 p.m., there were 38 spaces available out of 52. Wednesday, March 12th, at 12:30 p.m., there were 12 spaces available out of 52. Wednesday, March 12th, at 5:00 p.m., there were 39 spaces available out of 52. Thursday, March 13th, at 12:30 p.m., there were 22 spaces available out of 52. Thursday, March 13th, at 5:00 p.m., there were 37 out of 52 available. Friday, March 14th, at 6:00 p.m., there were 38 out of 52 spaces available. And Saturday, March 15th, at 3:30 p.m., there were 27 spaces out of 52 available. So the slide before you is an overview table of the parking findings found within the downtown. The highlighted section at the bottom of the table is highlighting the number of parking spaces available with all three lots combined, based on the day and the time that we went. And this does also not include any on-street parking that was available along Whittier and the north and south streets of those for the public. Each day, there was a noticeable amount of on-street parking available along Whittier Boulevard. And each day, for reference, there was 110 spots available in the city-owned lots or more. After the parking study, it has been determined from our findings that there is sufficient parking within the three city-owned parking lots, as well as the on-street parking available. There are some things that can be done through working with Public Works that can bring additional parking to the downtown. For example, there is signage on the on-street parking that states there's no parking between 7:00 p.m. and 4:00 a.m., which is a little bit contradictory to the amount of restaurants that are open past 7:00 p.m. And then we also found that there is an excessive amount of elongated red curbs eliminating a lot of parking spots. So Public Works has been made aware of these limitations, and that's something that we'll further analyze and work with Public Works. And then the slide before you is the surrounding existing restaurants' parking requirements provided from their existing approved staff reports that were applied for their conditional use permit for an alcohol license. All businesses were given the same requirements, being that the restaurant will utilize the off-street parking lots within the Newmark Mall, and then any other city-owned lots that we have, as well as street parking. These are the proposed hours of operation for the Monabella Public Market. It will be 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday. Other than the restaurant uses, the other abutting properties to the closest city-owned parking lot would be the Newmark Mall. The other abutting businesses, many of them are lower-impact uses that wouldn't bring as significant of an amount of traffic. For example, there's AT&amp;T, a law office, dental office, barber shops, and then some beauty shops and a boutique. Many of these businesses do not operate on Sundays. Some of them don't operate Saturday or Sunday. And then there's a few that don't operate on some days of the week. The hours of operation for these abutting businesses are not a restaurant use, and they typically close between 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., one closing earlier in the afternoon around 2:00 p.m. Many of the properties that abut Newmark Mall do not tend to bring heavy traffic and/or that the hours and days of operation will not heavily interact with the proposed hours and days of operation of Monabella Public Market and the other existing restaurants. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 3-25, approving the conditional use permit with conditions to allow the onsite sale of a full line of alcohol for a type 47 license for onsite consumption in conjunction with the restaurant, Monabella Public Market, for the property located at 516 West Whittier Boulevard, and to determine and find that this project is categorically exempt from the SEQA guidelines related to Class 1 existing facilities. Thank you. This concludes my presentation. Both myself and the applicant are available for questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff? Is there a possibility that we can hear from the applicant, any chance?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jason M. speaking for the applicant. It wishes my father. His name is Yao. And then there's a few things I want to say. First, I want to acknowledge that I was not fully prepared for the level of resistance we faced on our last conference. I now realize that much of it comes from a neighboring restaurant, which I haven't considered as a competitor. But competition is not a bad thing. It's what drives the city's growth and diversity. My hope is that we can work together to make the street more vibrant, attracting, more visitors, and more benefiting to all businesses in the area. On the topic of competition, I want to address that the concern of being a copy of other simulated restaurants. And the restaurant industry is built on a variety of unique offerings, just as there are different burger places with their own distinct flavors and experiences. Every restaurant brings something different to the table. There's no such thing as copying a different restaurant in this industry. I believe each establishment has its own identity, quality, and customer base. And on our track record speak for ourselves, my father owns the building 620 West Whittier Boulevard. And then currently, someone else is operating 701 Bar Restaurant. So my father would be the owner of the 620 instead of the operator. And I know that I might have mistaken it last time. I said he was the operator for the 701, but he's not. We have someone. He rented our building, and then he has his restaurant named under 701, and he's the operator. And then a while ago, we rented our property to a tenant who sold discounted items. However, we later received notice from City Hall that selling discounted items is prohibited on Whittier Boulevard. So we terminated their lease, and then since then, our building, 516 West Whittier Boulevard, has been vacant for a whole year. And then we have lost a lot of rent for the year. Since then, we have maintained the store as it is and regularly monitored the properties to ensure it remains in good condition, unlike neglecting the spaces, and we have actively taken care of it. There have been three incidents where homeless individuals broke in while the store was vacant. The first two times, we responded immediately and called the police, but we were unable to locate them. On the third occasion, we took extra precautions by positioning ourselves at the back of the store while the police covered the front. This strategy allowed us to successfully locate the individual. Having a vacant space in the city and in the downtown area is not a benefit to the city. And also, it is not a benefit. It does not look good. Despite these challenges, we've continued to maintain our property responsibility. We are committed to managing the business well and providing excellent service with customer satisfaction as our top priority. We do not see neighboring businesses as competitors. We see them as part of the shared community. Our goal is not to take any business away from anyone, but rather bring cultural diversity and economic prosperity to Montebello. The restaurant we are proposing will introduce a variety of cuisines, such as Chinese food, Mexican food, Japanese food, Korean food, and Thai food, giving residents and visitors more dining options and enhancing the city's reputation as a food destination. Addressing the parking concerns, we understand that the parking has long been a challenge in Old Whittier, not just for us, but for all businesses in the area. However, a lack of parking spaces has never stopped Montebello from growing and becoming more prosperous. Regardless of whether our restaurant is approved or not, this commercial space will be occupied by some kind of business, meaning there will be increase of foot traffics, no matter what. However, our proposed restaurant provides a welcoming, high-quality dining spaces for families and residents to enjoy something that enhances the community, rather than just adding congestions. Additionally, there are approximately, what was stated by Grace, there were more than 100 parking spaces across the street and nearby the street where people can walk to our restaurant, and there will be available for our customers. Approving this conditional use permit is an opportunity to invest the city's future. A high-end, well-managed restaurant will create jobs, boost the local economy, and attract more visitors. Our policy is to work only with high-end commercial businesses to ensure that we contribute positively to the community. Montebello is growing, and with the right business in place, it can become even more attractive, prosperous, and culturally rich. I urge for all Commissioners to consider, not just to present concerns, but the long-term benefits this project will bring to the city. Thank you for everyone's time and consideration.
Thank you, Jason. Do you mind sticking around, just in case the Commissioner has some questions for you? Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Thank you for your presentation. What's before us here is a request for the alcohol license, right?
Yes.
It is established that a restaurant is a given right, from my understanding, right?
That is correct. Restaurant without alcohol would be permitted by right.
Okay. My question for you, Jason, would be giving, so with or without a liquor license, are you guys still looking forward to proceeding with the restaurant plan? Or is it something that you guys are not going to do? Shall you not receive the alcohol license?
Yes. No matter what, we still prefer to have our business because by selling alcohol in this whole restaurant, it only concludes like a 10% to 15%. More of it's for family to enjoy different varieties of food. But instead of alcohol, it's for someone to take a little sip, you know, for people who enjoy having alcohol. And there will only be, like, I believe, eight to 10 spaces for the bar, which is only 10% of the whole, you know, restaurant. And our main goal is to open like a culturality restaurant where everyone could just, you know, enjoy inside. And yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lomali. That was a very good question. I was wondering the same thing as well. Any more questions, Commissioners?
I wasn't here last week or last time, but I think it's a common misconception that unless it's a bar where people sit there all day to drink, that people go to a restaurant and, you know, to have a dining experience, to drink and hang out and stay there the whole time, or watch a sporting event. They're going there mostly, my family experience, my personal experience. If you're gonna go eat, you eat, and you consume alcohol while you eat, and then you go home, I hope. I don't see anybody sticking around at a restaurant to eat and drink because that just doesn't happen. It's not a bar. It's not a sporting venue where someone's gonna sit there for two and a half hours. So, and it sounds like there was a conflict with the parking correlated with alcohol sales. I just don't see that correlation making sense because a restaurant is, without the sale of alcohol or with alcohol, is gonna, you know, not gonna drive more people or less people. It's gonna drive the same amount of people, except with the alcohol consumption, in my opinion. And I guess, you know, I have to respect other people's position in terms of consuming or not consuming alcohol. It just, for me, it enhances my dining experience, but that's me. But it doesn't make me want to stay there. Sorry, you don't want to hang out at your restaurant all day long. It just doesn't do it for me. I don't go to bars either to hang out. If I'm gonna watch a game, I go home. But some people would want to stay there long-term, but that's for a bar. I don't see that at a restaurant. But that's my opinion. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Commissioner Cuevas. I have a quick question for the applicant. Jason, I recognize that you're not an architect, right?
No.
You might not know this off the top of your head, but I'm wondering what sort of improvements, or if you can describe... or if you can describe the type of improvements that you're expecting to make, not only to the building interior, but also to the exterior. Are there any plans to refurbish that?
Yes. So my dad is a contractor, so he knows almost everything of construction. So we will increase the look of exterior. We will refurbish it, and everything will be literally brand-new. And then also inside, currently, we need to do a lot of construction to make it into a restaurant and into a high-end restaurant. And so we do need to do a lot of refurbishing, either inside or outside of the property.
Okay. And you mentioned that you're not the operator of the 701 restaurant, right?
We're not. My dad is, my father is the owner of it, and then he rented out. And right now, I think due to the family conditions of the boss of 701, I want to state that he might not continue with his business. But we have already signed contract with a family-owned Mexican seafood restaurant, which we'll be establishing soon, and they're constructioning. So I wish everyone can enjoy over there, too.
Gotcha. I did see that, I did see that 701 Bar was permanently closed.
Yes.
Any more questions for Jason?
Not a question, but just a comment. And I think, you know, again, my opinion, a restaurant or facility of this type is becoming more and more common where businesses with one specific type of food have to work harder at maintaining the clientele. And the clientele, you know, get tired of a restaurant, and then, you know, the interest is gone and could easily lose clients. But a restaurant of this type or setup of this time, which brings different kind of food options, like the Boulevard Market, you know, where you have options, and then the restaurants are small, it allows a business owner to be able to switch out, you know, collaborators, I guess, that are, you know, partners of the business, to be able to switch them out if they're not doing well, and you don't lose the whole entire building. And we don't have vacant buildings sitting there for years. How much, how long did Jimmy's Restaurant sit vacant? About 30 years or so? And we, you know, unfortunately, in this area of the city, I think we want to enhance the attraction of a venue like this to bring people out, whether they walk or drive. I think this is a good model, again, my opinion, so thank you.
Thank you.
Jason, I do have, I also want to clarify one thing. I know in the previous meeting, we did receive emails in opposition of the project. One of them stood out to me, and it dealt with, it talked about the responsibility as an operator. It discussed, I don't know, nothing in particular, but it mentioned that there was a track record or some concern about not being a responsible liquor license holder. In that particular email, discussed the over-serving of people that attended that specific restaurant. I don't have the details of it. The email didn't really qualify any of those details as well. So I'm wondering if you can maybe talk about anything like that of your other establishments, if you have had anything like that? Or give you the opportunity to sort of rebuttal that idea?
So my father, he is more of a real estate person, where he owns lots of properties, not just in Montebello. He also owns houses worldwide. He also owns in Texas, where he also rents out to other tenants. And then he also has a property in Rancho Palos Verdes, which is a beach city in the southwest area, near Long Beach. So I would say he is a very responsible person where every time if there's an issue with the tenants, he would immediately have a response and actually go there in person and be able to fix whatever he needs. And then talking about being in the hold of an alcohol license, I also do think he's be able to handle it because what he has been telling me that is he's gonna have a specialized, trained operator that is gonna be sitting in the 516 and be able to maintain, safety-wise, and maintain everything he needs. There's gonna be someone that is gonna be well-trained for the restaurant. And yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Any more questions for Jason?
No, but I have a comment for staff. I know the parking analysis was great, I mean, the numbers came out. But maybe, I think you mentioned also that there's extensive red lanes for fire. Maybe since the vehicular traffic is going to increase on Whittier Boulevard, there's probably a consideration, and this will probably be beneficial for the surrounding businesses, like drop-off areas, or Uber drop-off, or because that's gonna be happening, especially that it's gonna be somewhat of a evening, you know, time to spend there, or events, or more events for the city. So maybe that would be something to consider in vehicular and pedestrian traffic, or indications even for, what are those? The lights for the crosswalks.
Mr. Chair? Those are all great suggestions, and I think we can definitely work with our Public Works Department and our Traffic and Safety Commission to see if we can move those forward.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Please.
Question about the hours of operation, because I think the hours of operation are proposed to be from 11:00 to 9:00 every day. Are other businesses in that area allowed to operate later? That's my understanding, as far as I recall, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Those are just the hours that this specific business is proposing.
Thank you, but there's other businesses in the surrounding area that operate later than 9:00?
Yes, other restaurants in the area do operate later than 9:00 p.m. Other like office and retail uses, they close much earlier.
Thank you.
Are the hours of operation included in the conditions?
Yes, they will be included in the conditions.
And now that you're on the podium, I recognize that the sort of the impromptu parking study that you guys did over this week was sort of a snapshot in time.
Yes.
Right? But how confident is, are you, how confident is that? That that is sort of a typical condition that we can expect?
I think every day was very consistent, and I think that's why we kind of chose the hours that we did. They are considered peak hours, heavier hours of traffic in the mid-afternoon and then later in the evening. I think going on the weekend was definitely very beneficial, too, to kind of see that in real time and see everyone's off work, everyone is more mobile within the city. So it was a better depiction of what it would really be like during that time.
Thank you. Any more questions for staff? In that case, when we're gonna open the public comment period?
Mr. Chair, we do have one speaker card for this item. We have Barney Santos.
Hello, Planning Commissioners, the staff, thank you for having me today. First of all, I just wanted to address a couple of things before starting what I wanted to say. In regards to the parking, you know, analysis that the staff did, they did a great job. The only caveat that all of you should know is that last week was raining a lot. And if anybody knows in hospitality, you know, people like Salvatore can attest, when it rains, there's about a 30% to 50% drop in business across the board because people in California don't have a culture of going out to eat restaurants when it rains. So just, I want you to just understand that nuance because the parking study that was done last week was a snapshot, and it was not a good snapshot of what it is like normally. Just keep that in mind. The other component, too, is 701, the replacement of 701, was not open either. That business is still closed, so that's not even including that parking as well. Joseph's, that's coming across the street, is in the construction phase, when those data open, but that's coming also. So when you add those two pieces, plus the fact that it was raining, it's a different conversation when it comes to parking. Just want you to understand that nuance as well for your decision-making. You know, the gentleman spoke about sort of competition. Trust me, we're not in competition with anybody. We have spent years building a brand at Boulevard Market. We're good, like, we're good. I care about this downtown tremendously. I own two businesses here. I own, I live here, I'm a homeowner with my wife, so I care a lot. I spend an enormous amount of my time trying to build the downtown. And so what this is about is about responsible people. He pointed out about us, but he dismisses the fact that Salvatore spoke about it. He dismisses the fact that there's emails from people, small business owners from the community, who also spoke out about it. It's not just us. We're having conversations with each other about this business. And more, not even the business itself, because we welcome businesses. We are all pro-business. I'm a small business commissioner for Hill de Solis. I'm all about small businesses. But what I care about is the operator himself. And according to the data that we pulled from the city of Montebello, from the records department, there's been a total of 218 police calls on the two properties that the Pan family owns related to public intoxication, drug-related issues, disturbances of the peace. Both properties have multiple code enforcement issues, including building stuff with no permits as early as February, this February. So this is stuff that's happening still. They failed constantly to like comply with the city's standards and demonstrate that they're responsible as operators. So he comes out here and wears a suit today, and that's fine, I appreciate him. And what he's trying to do, we're not trying to dismiss him from actually opening up a restaurant. Please, go ahead. What I'm pleading with this commission today is, let's consider the fact that they're demonstrated irresponsible actions and negligence as property owners. Like, that's the track record. He talks about track record, that's their track record in Montebello. The fact that they've had 218 police calls, they had multiple code enforcement violations, and it's a hotspot for drunkenness and issues. This is the problem that we have to address. We can't responsibly issue a full liquor license to people who have demonstrated irresponsibility as operators. If they want to come back in a couple years, in three years, and apply for beer and wine license, sure, but demonstrate that you can actually be responsible business owners first before applying for the ultimate responsibility, which is full liquor. That's all we're saying. Let them open as restaurants. They don't need to issue a full liquor license.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our speaker cards, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next, I'm gonna go close the public comment. Actually, Jason, do you want to maybe speak or rebuttal the discussion that the gentleman brought up?
Yeah, so according to what the other gentleman said about 200 and something cases of the police calls, I don't think we're aware of that at all. And then drug-related issues, and then about construction in February? We have done nothing like that. I believe the only construction that has been doing is the 620 West Whittier Boulevard, where they're establishing a new restaurant. Like I said earlier, it was the Mexican seafood restaurant that is new establishing. And then they also have the same restaurant in other cities, too. So this is like their second restaurant with, under the same name. So I'm not aware of any of those, what he just said. Like, I was just asking my dad if that's the case, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'm gonna close the public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I guess I would just have a question for staff. Do we run a background on the applicant's track record when it comes to their, any other liquor licenses that they currently hold within the city or as an individual?
As far as a background, we don't do a full background check. With the exception of cannabis operators, we do, per the municipal code. However, we do look as part of the, preparing the staff report for the site, we would look at open code enforcement cases or any violations. And I believe we have the data for this specific location. And Grace, can you provide that?
For the location where they are proposing this restaurant, there was less than 10, like, calls of service and violations.
What's the timeframe for that?
It was from 2020 to 2025.
And these violations are not necessarily related to the onsite consumption of alcohol, related to the building?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, this location, it doesn't have an alcohol license existing, so it wasn't related to alcohol. I think it was more so just calls of service that were either pinned to the address or at the location.
I have a question. When it comes to a liquor license, isn't the background associated with the person filing or processing that request a state-type license, and they do the background check on individuals?
That's a great question. I believe ABC has, they have their own process, as Grace mentioned in her presentation. Even an approval today doesn't guarantee the liquor license. I do believe ABC has a process where they vet applicants to ensure that they're, for example, they don't have a history of bad behavior or issues where they've had other licenses. But I can confirm that, but I don't know that for sure. I mean, we'd have to confirm that, I mean.
I think that's my understanding as well, working for the building department, of course, in another city, that conditional use permits associated with a liquor license come with such a, you know, background check. But, you know, again, that's my understanding. Doesn't mean that it's accurate. But I have a follow-up question. In the past, when we have approved conditional use permits, the conditions of approval run with the property, and they're associated with compliance to the conditions and the regulations established by the set of, you know, approvals. If they violate those conditions, we have the right to bring this back to a hearing and address those issues. And if they're not conforming to those conditions, we can revoke the conditional use permit, correct?
Mr. Chairman, you're absolutely correct. We have revoked, I believe, two CUPs within the last six months for not complying with conditions of approval. And there is a condition in this CUP that allows for that same oversight from the planning commission. So if there is anything that is concerning the conditional use permit, it could be brought back to the commission for a revocation proceeding. So you are correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, if I may, one last one, I promise. I think the zone, as far as the tenant space or the building space, it does allow for another restaurant to open. I think Commissioner Lomelie also asked that question. So I, coming back to the point I made about correlating the sale of alcohol to parking, is there anything that has been done similar to this before where we correlate the sale of alcohol to parking? There is no additional trigger for more parking when there's a sale of alcohol for a restaurant, is that correct?
So as part of the process, there are findings that are required, right? Those findings do, they're very general in the sense that they, I believe, one of them is at a detriment to the surrounding area. Although not specifically related to parking, we'd have to consider that. But I believe that parking as a standalone, I don't think would create a basis for the denial of an alcohol license. And I'll look to the city attorney for some clarification on that.
Yeah, I agree with Director Palome. You know, it is a finding that they have to look at kind of the overall impacts. But specifically with regards to parking or any potential parking conditions or requirements to add additional parking, those aren't a requirement of the code. And I believe they haven't been imposed on prior businesses in a similar situation. So yeah, it would be my opinion that that's not something that the commission could necessarily impose.
Director Palome, just to follow up on some of Commissioner Quivas's questions, what is the period for? What what is the period for a compliance review on on these type of CUPs?
So that would be something that would be specifically called out, uh, which we've done in the past for other um CUPs where we do either an annual compliance review for a set timeframe. We could do um quarterly. Um, uh, did, Grace, I'm gonna ask, did we include a condition with a compliance review component for this CUP?
Yes, every alcohol license, they are required to have a compliance review.
And is that annual?
It'll be annually, yes.
Okay. So then, to answer your question, um, yes, they would be required to come back, come back, and we would come to the commission with a compliance review, correct? Yes.
Gotcha.
Similar, um, the, for example, Sizzler, when we approved their alcohol license, they, I believe, have done three. Daniel, I know, has been working on that. I think we've worked with them every year, correct, for the last three years?
That is correct.
Thank you.
So the compliance review is done yearly for three years?
I believe Sizzler, is it three years or five years?
For scissors, they they have the condition that a quarterly compliance review must be conducted for the first two years. They went through their quarterly uh compliance review, so every three months. And now, uh, Sizzler is on an uh annual compliance review now.
Great.
Uh, when does the the compliance review end? Is that after three years, five years, six years, or is it just uh continuous?
It just depends on the way that the condition is imposed. Uh, typically, the way we've been phrasing, I believe, is just continuous unless it states otherwise.
And maybe we could, Grace, what is the condition for this CUP? Okay, thank you.
But, uh, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sure.
Um, even if they exceed or pass their compliance due deadline or dates, um, I think the city can make findings to force them back for a re-review if we get complaints or receive complaints or violations of the conditions of approval, correct?
That is correct, Commissioner. Uh, separate and aside from the compliance review, if there are any issues that warrant um uh the uh the CUP being brought back to the commission, that is definitely something that can be done.
So the condition that is in this resolution, it says that the applicant and operator shall prepare and submit an annual project compliance report. This report is due annually for the first three years of alcohol sales, starting one year from the date of issuance of an ABC license. The compliance report must be submitted to the director to demonstrate compliance with the conditions of approval. The director shall transmit the annual project compliance report to the planning commission to either receive and file or take any other action as deemed necessary.
Any more questions for staff commissioners? No. Um, my thoughts are that I think it's within the, it's it's within um uh benefit to Montebello to uh be business friendly, right? Um, we don't always necessarily get a choice on which type of uh businesses come in. And so long as they are within the uh the allowed uses for the area, uh, I I think it's, it's not something that we can necessarily dictate. Um, and I recognize that there is a a big problem with parking, right? And that problem is not going to be solved anytime soon. Uh, I mean, I don't know what's in the future, Director Palome, but um, I don't think it's gonna be solved anytime soon, and and it's on uh and it's not a strong enough reason in my mind alone, the parking alone, to to restrict businesses in the area. I think that that we could add a a stipulation in the uh in the conditions of approval to perhaps add maybe quarterly reviews uh for the first two years. And um after that, if everything goes well, then you can continue to a yearly review period. What do you guys think about that?
I would support something like that. I mean, we've done it in other businesses. And it's probably uh um something that the applicant, you know, would be equipped to, you know, present to the city uh uh within the quarterly basis. And, you know, if it's something that's required on a yearly basis, it's just a matter of doing it more frequently initially in case there's problems that need to be addressed or resolved with um business. I I I think it's a good condition to apply.
I I think it'll help address sort of the concerns with any uh with the issues that some of the public brought up, uh, like Mr. Santos brought up, the, you know, sort of some histories uh with the applicant that that are not not good, right? So I think uh having or burdening the applicant with a quarterly review, that's every three months. I think it'll allow us to give us a a better idea or a good idea of how the future will hold for for the use of this license moving forward. So with that, I think uh maybe I can entertain a motion to approve the CUP?
Chairperson Medina, oh.
Just to clarify, um, are you calling for a motion to include the additional condition?
Yes, I'm sorry, so.
And and if I could just speak that that conditions to the record, so you would like a um compliance review quarterly for the first two years and then annually for three years after that?
Yes.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
And I want to make sure that that is sort of in line with what we've asked of other businesses, that we're not putting in an overdue or uh special uh constraint to this business.
If I may, Chair, I would uh add a condition that it be from the establishment of the day that the ABC license is established. Be because if if you impose the condition now based off of this day, and they don't necessarily have an alcohol license established, they may not have time to, for us to uh accurately assess what the impact of.
Yeah, I believe that's in the condition as it's drafted, correct, Grace?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So we would just take that language and add your amendment. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And to confirm, yes, you can make a motion.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I would like to motion that we approve the CUP uh with the conditions that we have quarterly reviews for the first two years, uh, quarterly compliance reviews for the first two years uh uh after such date as the ABC license is established. Um, and then uh yearly for the remaining three years after the first two. And also to determine that the project is exempt from CEQA um section. Section.
Fifteen.
Fifteen three oh one, related to the class one existing facilities, as it involves negligible or no expansion of the existing former use. That is my motion.
I'll second that.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, of course. Chairperson Medina?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Lomali?
Abstain.
Commissioner Morales?
Abstain.
Commissioner Cuevas?
Aye.
And the motion does not pass?
Doesn't pass.
Motion doesn't pass, there's a majority. The commission can entertain a an amended motion if uh it so desires as well. Um, but if not, then the motion is passed.
I'm sorry, say that again, so we can entertain an amended motion?
You can make another motion if you if you feel like there is a motion or there is a middle ground that would work. You don't have to, it's not.
I see. So we're we're really back to the discussion then? Okay.
But do we have to take action, right? Uh, we we don't approve it as amended. Would it help to bring it back to the original without those amendments um made by Commissioner, by my Chair Medina?
Would it be possible to bring it back to the commissioner's um comments for us to discuss?
I I think we're there, right?
Yeah, we're still there. Okay, we're still.
Because the motion didn't pass.
No, I'm just uh concerned about the, well, uh, what was mentioned about the irresponsibilities, right? Uh, just taking that into consideration. If, uh, you know, there are conditions already that are um being set. But if there are, there are to show this irresponsibility throughout the business operation already, um, can the business be terminated if something were to extreme affect the city, Montebello?
Do you want me to try and, so? That's a, that's a sort of a two-part question. So to answer your question, uh, the CUP could be revoked and alcohol would go away. Again, based on the specific plan as approved, um, the restaurant would be allowed even without the alcohol. So um, we would use the conditions to, in essence, hold the restaurant accountable at this point, uh, because if you just, if it was approved by right, it would it would have to go through what's called, you know, code enforcement action, right? As opposed to having an entitlement on the property where there's a privilege, this being the alcohol sales, which in essence would require additional oversight, um, the compliance review, for example. Whereas a restaurant standalone would not have that compliance review component. So I hope that answers your question.
Absolutely.
Yeah, all right.
Can we do the motion again?
I think the commission called for a motion, the same motion?
Yes.
Mr. City Attorney, is that appropriate for the motion to be brought back?
Uh, yes, you can, you can make that motion again.
Aye.
Um, I I would just request that you be clear and repeated.
Okay, well, uh, I motion uh to uh continue and approve the condition use permit for case number PC twenty twenty-four zero zero one five CUP to allow the onsite sale of a full line of alcoholic beverages. Um, the alcohol beverage control license type forty-seven for onsite consumption in conjunction with a restaurant, Montebello Public Market, for the property located at five one six West Whittier Boulevard and with the conditions that were also applied.
Okay, I I think there is some language that's a little bit confused on. Are you, do you want to continue?
Ah, yes, continue.
Oh, continue the hearing to a date certain?
No, no, that I approve of the, well, that my.
So the motion is to approve?
In favor.
Okay.
All right, so I'll 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 just, so we have a motion to approve with the condition that was originally proposed, taking our conditional language and adding that there would be a quarterly compliance review for the first two years. And then that would be followed by um three years of annual compliance reviews, where we would report back to the commission on our findings. All right?
And the environmental as well.
Could you add the CEQA finding as well?
And uh, to determine and find that the project ENV number twelve dash two four dash CE is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to CEQA guideline section one five three zero one, related to class one existing facilities as as it involves negoti- uh negligible or no expansion of the existing or former use.
I would second the motion.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Chairperson Medina?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Lomali?
Abstain.
Commissioner Morales?
Aye.
Commissioner Cuevas?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to our next item?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair Commissioners, item three relates to a proposed conditional use permit to allow the demolition of an existing structure and the construction and use of a new self-storage facility at seven twenty South Maple Avenue. Uh, Daniel Ruiz will deliver the presentation on this item for tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, members of the planning commission and the public. Tonight I will be presenting case number PC dash twenty twenty-five dash zero 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 one dash CUP for a conditional use permit application which will allow the applicant, Madison Capital Group Management LLC, to demolish the existing one-story structure located at seven twenty South Maple Avenue and allow the applicant to construct and operate on approximately a hundred and seventy thousand five hundred eighty-two square foot four-story self-storage facility. On January fourteen, twenty twenty-five, Madison Capital Group Management LLC, the applicant, filed a conditional use permit application to demolish the existing multi-use, multi-tenant, one-story structure located at seven twenty South Maple Avenue, the project site, and to construct a new four-story self-storage facility. On January sixteen, twenty twenty-five, staff issued a deemed complete letter. The aerial map in this slide shows seven twenty South Maple Avenue, which, for reference, is located on South Maple Avenue bounded by South Taylor Avenue to the east and Beach Street to the south. The project area for the proposed CUP is identified by the yellow rectangle and the total combined lot area of the site is approximately eighty-six thousand two hundred forty-nine square feet or one point nine eight acres. The project area is currently developed with a single-story, five-unit structure comprised of various commercial and light industrial uses, including a forklift repair business, multiple auto-related uses, as well as a wholesale business. All structures on the site would be demolished to accommodate the construction of the proposed self-storage facility. Seven twenty South Maple Avenue is zone M one, the city's light manufacturing zone, and is surrounded by other property zones for light manufacturing to the north, south, and west. Additionally, to the east, there are single-family residential zone properties adjacent to the project site. The immediate surrounding land uses fall under the city's general plan designations of neighborhood and industrial, which is fully compatible with the proposed self-storage facility. It is not anticipated that this specific proposal will have an adverse impact on adjacent or budding properties. The applicant canvassed the neighborhood during the month of February to provide information about the project and provided a petition supporting the project with two hundred nine signatures from the surrounding community. For reference, the proposed site plan shown here demonstrates the overall layout and configuration of the project site, including the proposed self-storage facility. The proposed self-storage facility has a building footprint square footage of approximately forty-two thousand seven hundred thirteen square feet, and each of the four floors proposed will measure the same for a total of a hundred and seventy thousand eight hundred fifty-two square feet of gross building area. The project proposes a maximum of one thousand two hundred and fifty storage units, along with a three hundred ninety-one square foot leasing office. A total of thirteen surface-level parking spaces are included to serve as customer and employee parking and loading. Access to the site will be via two twenty-nine-foot, four-inch, two-way driveway approaches. The front portion of the building will be set back twenty feet from the fr- front property line and will be entirely landscaped. Similarly, the building will be set back forty feet from the rear property line and will include a ten-foot landscape buffer between the project and the adjacent single-family residential properties. The project rendering shown here demonstrate what the proposed self-storage facility will look like if approved. The structure is proposed with a maximum height of fifty-five feet towards the front of the structure, but the height of the structure steps down to forty-eight feet in the portions to the rear of the structure closest to the adjacent residential uses to mitigate any impacts to these uses. The exterior walls are predominantly composed of cement plaster, and the color scheme of the building consists of a neutral color palette consisting of mostly white, gray, and black with hints of red. No major windows or openings are proposed to the north and east of the property to prevent the self-storage customers from being able to view the adjacent residential uses. Regarding the environmental review, case number PC dash twenty twenty five dash zero zero one dash CUP is considered a project per the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA definition. The project is considered a Class thirty two categorical exemption under SEQA Section fifteen three thirty two, which consists of projects characterized as infill development that meets certain criteria. The proposed project meets all of the conditions required to be classified as a Class thirty two SEQA exemption. Additionally, the applicant provided several studies and document documentation to substantiate the Class thirty two categorical exemption, including a vehicle miles traveled analysis, an air quality and greenhouse gas assessment, a noise and vibration impact report, as well as a parking assessment. On March sixth twenty twenty five, the public hearing notice was mailed to owners within the three hundred foot radius from the exterior boundaries of the subject property. Additionally, on March sixth twenty twenty five, the public hearing notice was published in the Daily Journal, the Woodyard Daily News. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution number zero five dash twenty five approving the demolition of all structures located on the project site and allowing the construction of an approximately one hundred seventy thousand five hundred eighty two square foot four story structure for self storage and office related uses for the property located at seven twenty South Maple Avenue. Additionally, staff recommends that the Planning Commission determine and find that the project ENV number zero one dash twenty five is exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guideline Section fifteen three thirty two related to infill development projects. Thank you. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions or comments, as are the representatives for the proposed project.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification. What what is before us? Is it it can't be the demo, right? The demo can be done.
No, it's a conditional use permit for the approval of a self storage facility. But in order to accommodate that, all of the structures on the site are proposed to be demolished.
Okay, so it's it's the use that's before us?
Correct, the use of a self storage facility or.
And self storage is not allowed by right in the M one zone?
That is correct.
Okay, what what zones allow those type of uses by right?
In this case, the CM, M one, and M two zones allows for self storage uses. That's a like heavy commercial, like light industrial or light industrial and a heavy industrial zones.
Okay, so you said CM and what what other?
M one and M two.
Allow them by right?
Through the conditional use permit process.
Okay.
They are not allowed by right anywhere in the city.
I see, I see, I understand. Any questions for staff?
So, yeah, kind of confused about that as well. So self storage facilities are not allowed by right in any of the zones, even the more industrial M two zones?
That is correct. So in in this case, self storage use is actually not in our current Monobello Municipal Code Appendix of Primary Uses. There's an ordinance from two thousand one that shows that self storage uses were listed in the Monobello in that index. But we did not find any reason for it to have ever been removed. We think it was removed inadvertently. And in this case, based off of ordinance two thousand one, which is an attachment to the staff report, it reflects that in the CM, M one, and M two zones, self storage uses are allowed only through a conditional use permit.
Because we have one down the street, right, from there?
There there's three total self storage facilities that I was able to identify in the city. Two of them were approved in nineteen eighty eight, and there was another one that was approved in the year two thousand. So I think the might have been a difference of regulations at the time. I can't speak to previous determinations that were made related to these uses.
If I may add, Mr. Chair, staff did conduct extensive research research on this on this issue in connection in collaboration with the City Attorney's Office and concluded that CUPs would be required in the zones CM, M one, M two for a self storage facility.
I have another question. I I don't know if this is an appropriate question to ask, but do we know if if we'll be updating these this type of use in the update to the general plan?
So within the general plan, the the general plan designation for this property is identified as neighborhood. It identifies primarily residential with mixed use encouraged along corridors. This type of use isn't necessarily considered industrial throughout the industry. It's more so commercial. A lot of these uses are for commercial businesses, local residents to to store their their supplies or whatever they want to store. But as is seen across the industry, self storage, to my understanding, isn't necessarily seen per se as an industrial use. But in this case, the designation adjacent right across the street, it is, there are industrial designations right across the street. And ultimately, we think what staff believes that the proposed use fits in in the area. Also, based off of the zoning, it is an M one zone. It is a light manufacturing zone. And based off of the ordinance which allows the these types of uses through a conditional use permit process, we we believe it was adequate to to propose the use at the site.
And I and I think if the question is, is this consistent with the general plan? This would be taking a, I believe it is an auto repair business, which is is it auto truck repair?
There's multiple auto related uses, a forklift repair, a wholesale business. And in many cases, self storage facilities are known to be not generate as much noise. Essentially, once people drop off their goods and supplies, they don't come back that often. Based off of the traffic report that was provided, it's anticipated that a total of nine parking spaces would be needed during peak demand. And so overall, staff believes that the the use would be consistent and it could even provide a buffer between the residential uses to the east and the more industrial uses to to the west.
Yeah, and in looking at the plans, I believe there there are additional buffers, for example, the landscaping and the cypress trees in between the properties, which provides additional buffers for the property.
Yeah, there there is a ten foot landscape buffer proposed adjacent to the single family homes to the east of the property. There will also be a landscape buffer in the front, and there is separation. So the way that the applicant proposed the project, there's a forty foot separation from the rear property line. That's the the one that's adjacent to the single family residential zone and where that actual structure is placed.
Is there a way we can bring up the the site plan again? Looks like we're having some licensing issues. It's okay, perhaps we can, while he brings that up, I don't know if the applicant would like to have an opportunity?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Oh, it's an attachment E. I have it. Thank you. Leave it to the architect to know.
Chairperson Medina, Vice Chair Lomely, Planning Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Adam Lens. I am with Madison Capital Group Management. We operate as Go Store It, which is the is the storage brand. I oversee development nationally. I am based here in Southern California. We own and operate approximately one hundred and forty stores in twenty three states. So we've had a heavy focus on the gateway cities in this area. You can see examples of stores we've built over the last year in Pico Rivera and South Gate, Monterey Park, for example. So, you know, I just want to say that a large portion of the time I spend is site selection, right? And so this is a thirty plus million dollar investment, so we are very intentional and careful about how we analyze opportunities and look at this. And as we went out and looked, because there, I I think he listed one facility that was built in two thousand. Only three facilities in the in the city. And the way we look at opportunities is, right, how many square feet per person of there is there of storage in an area? In the national average, if you were, will equilibrium where supply meets demand is like eight square feet per person. And in Monobello is two point three. So we identify three hundred and fifty thousand plus or minus square feet of unmet demand and the fact that there hasn't been a facility built. In over twenty years, if you visit the existing ones in the city, they're full. Rents are going up and it's difficult to get many unit sizes. So we thought of this as a great opportunity. Again, we want to make the decision easy for you, so we go out to the community and source feedback, both positive and negative. And we did go out and knock on over a thousand doors, a lot, you know, and we had two or three plus touch points in the surrounding community where we would try to enlist that, you know, that feedback. And the probably the most consistent feedback we heard is the adjacent use in terms of the multi tenant building that's there now. The rear use that abuts the residential is a is a food truck commissary, I think. Daniel, and I want to thank staff, by the way, they've been tremendous through this whole process, so we appreciate their support. Daniel mentioned it was a wholesale business, but they wash out food trucks, they stock food trucks. So the number one complaint we heard from the residents was the odors from the food trucks, the grease traps, the oil. Loading the trucks in the morning, starting at four fifteen, four thirty AM, music, conversations. So noise, odor, there's been some oil slipped. I've heard anecdotally a tale of of a child that slipped and fell on some oil that was spilled on the property. So we look at this as an opportunity to make a heavy investment in the city, bring a much needed product that for the residents and the local businesses that hasn't been met in over twenty years. And, you know, partner with the community. Again, we've gone out and we're we want to be a cognizant, sensitive neighbor and and work with the community to to deliver the best product we can. And again, we have a four story building in Pico Rivera that's adjacent to some single family. We opened in May of last year. It's already eighty percent full. And we have a great relationship with the neighbors, very similar, a heavily landscaped buffer between the two. So it was an opportunity to improve their rear property lines versus what was there previously. So appreciate the opportunity. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I appreciate the consideration here tonight.
Thank you for that. Do you know approximately how many jobs this facility will create or support?
Yeah, I I mean, it's it's probably three full time and a couple part time, and then there's there's regional people, you know, that we have that you you call it a half of a, you know, you can assign a half to this, you know, facility, so three and a half to five total.
And again, I I recognize that you're not the architect, but you're sounds like you're very familiar with these with with your buildings. Do you know how tall the fence in the back is? I know you created a looks like a thirty forty foot buffer. And there's an existing nascent fence. I'm assuming that you're proposing that to stay?
I believe we I know there's significant rebuild of eight foot wall in the rear, you know, in the rear and on the sides that we'd be willing to reconstruct as part of the project.
Okay, any questions for the applicant commissioners?
I actually have a question for staff in regards to the three hundred degree radius letters that were sent out to the surrounding neighbors and maybe even businesses around there as well, commercial and industrial, especially that's, you know, adjacent to residential and and commercial. Were there any specific comments or from the neighbors?
I, to my knowledge, staff did not receive any comments, either positive or negative about the project.
Because it's good to know, you know.
Just to add to that, I think Daniel pointed out in his presentation, there was a petition submitted with signatures, and I believe they were in support, correct, Daniel?
Two hundred nine signatures.
Two hundred, yes.
Yes, that that is attachment J within the staff report. The we included the two hundred nine support petitions in favor of the project from the surrounding community.
So that outreach was done.
Mr. Chair, let me, thank you. In terms of ever, not ever, but in the near future, because I see this as industrial or commercial zone, not quite the zone. I mean, although there's residential zones surrounding this property and but there was no residential zones or lots taken up or that would be taken up by this proposed development at all.
That is correct. The property is zoned M one. There is a mobile home park to the north, which is actually zoned M one as well. And to the south, there there's the property is also zoned in the M one as well. And to the west, I believe it might be M two. But that that whole area, that that whole street is technically industrial. It isn't until you get to the other side, to the rear property line where that those homes are zoned R one, single family residential.
And there isn't anything in the near future that would designate this area to go back to or or to not to go back to, but to go towards residential use at all. Because the majority of the spaces along Maple, I think there's some in between houses that are there, but there's a lot of industrial and commercial type uses, right? There's, oh, Mr. Palomino was gonna get ready to say something. There's no plans for anything?
I mean, technically, the general plan designation, that is what we updated, that's supposed to be in place for the next twenty years or so, until we update it again. That does encourage for mixed use along the corridor. But through the zoning code, it is a light manufacturing zone, so in the future, I know we're planning on doing a zoning code update. The question would be at that point, we would need to entertain and do our own research as to whether we would identify these as properties where we would encourage more residential versus industrial. But that that unfortunately, we're not at that point yet. Like I said, the the general plan has been updated, but we will need to update the zoning code in the immediate future. But it kind of makes it difficult here due to the combination of of residential and industrial as to which way you would want to go.
But again, I think one of the commissioners mentioned that this type of use is not technically industrial in any way, shape, or form, even in the building code. I think the occupancy is not as intrusive as a repair shop or any other uses that are there now in terms of, you know, the potential or probability of a fire or things of that sort that would affect the surrounding neighbors. Maybe the existing use towards the back would have a more potential to affect the neighbors if there was ever a fire, unless someone sets a fire inside the each of the units. And I would suspect this building of this size would be fully sprinkler, so it would put out any kind of fire if that engulfed the building or was initiated within the building. Okay, sorry, I think I'm answering some of my own questions. Thank you.
Yeah, there's to add a little bit to that, there's a twenty eight foot driveway lane which was intended to be there for the firefighters or ambulance or anyone that needs to drive through that lane to be able to fit through there in an ample manner. So in this case, that is part of, if you look at it to the north and south, that's where the two driveway approaches are. And that loop is there for a reason. It's to add to the safety features of the property and to to allow emergency responders to be able to to respond accordingly.
So the buffer zone would also, besides reducing the noise and creating that separation from the residential, it would hopefully eliminate some of the roaches that migrate from the current property to the surrounding houses?
Ideally.
Thank you. Any more questions for staff? I have one last point of clarification, and I'm going to use it for discussion with the group. What's the total height of the building?
So the total height of the building is fifty five feet towards the front portion of the building, and it steps down to forty eight feet towards the rear. So as it gets closer to the single family residential to the back, it goes down to forty eight feet. But at the the tallest point at the front of the building, it is fifty five feet.
It is fifty five feet?
Correct.
Fifty five feet. It's still four stories in the back, alright?
It's still four stories across the way, just the 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 front facade is designed a little differently.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay. Any more questions for staff? No? In that case, I'd like to open a public comment for the item.
Mr. Chair, we do have three speaker cards. I will go ahead and call them in the order they were received. First speaker will be Linda Becker.
Good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Commissioners, Madison Capital Group Management, LLC and the public. I am Linda Becker, the owner of the adjacent lot with the addresses of 732 and 742 South Maple Avenue. I have owned the property since 1988. Since this date, I have also had an easement for the driveway on the north side of our property, which is the south side of this proposed project. And I want to ensure that any construction that is permitted for this project at 720 South Maple Avenue, that my easement is noted and upheld. This easement provides access to the buildings at 732 and 742 South Maple Avenue. Our tenants need this driveway to access their units. We, as it stated, that the mailings went out, I think, on March 6th, so we just received notice of this hearing. It would have been nice in the future to provide the map or the drawings of more information about what the project is or what it's going to look like. So now that it, we see, I see upon the map, it looks like there's, the driveway is staying on, on the south side of their project and there will be one on the north side. So a couple of questions that I have will be, will the entire property be fenced in? Will there be an entrance, where are the entrances to the building? And will there be a gate to the entrance to the driveway, especially affecting us on the south side?
I think we can give the applicant an opportunity to answer.
I want to assure Ms. Becker and the commission, we're fully aware of the easement. And if you pull up the site plan, we've, we've respected the easement with no, no intention of blocking it or changing the traffic patterns or access for her customers' residence, tenant, or not residence, but users of her property. So any gate, there will be a gate set back behind the easement so that, just for security and access control purposes, but it's off the easement to the east so that she maintains full access to her property.
Thank you for that. Well, Ms. Becker, you heard it from the applicant and it's part of the oral record now.
Our next public speaker will be Lydia Maldonado.
Hello. My name is Lydia Maldonado and I'm just upset that this is happening. I live at 709 South Taylor Avenue and that's right, that's going to be my backyard. And I move, I've been there 65 years. I moved there when they had cows in the corner and a lumberyard. I felt like I was in the country and the city at the same time. I raised my kids there and I love my sunsets. And I feel if this building goes up in my backyard, it's just going to take everything away. And that's very, very hard for me, very hard. It's like, I can't, I can't look out in the backyard and see a block wall, see a building there. I, I have to have it open. I have to. I, I, I don't know what is, how far it's going this way or that way, but they were talking about, people talking about the smell and the noise and all that. All that was taken care of years ago because it was reported and the city stopped them from starting too early, making too much noise and taking care of the trash bins, because the trash bins are, are like, you know, behind me on the side. So, but to see this coming up on my, on the backyard, on the other side of my backyard, I, I, I don't know. I, I think you would all feel the same way. You buy a house, you fix it up and it's your dream house. And then one day, somebody goes and puts a wall in your backyard or a wall on the side of your house where all your windows are shadowed out and you can't see out. You know? And, and I just don't want it. I don't want it. And I, I would have said something earlier, but I just got the letter recently. I just got it recently. So what does anybody have to say?
I think we can probably give the applicant an opportunity to sort of bring us up to speed on, on that particular discussion. I can see that on the plan, they're proposing a 30, I'm sorry, 40-foot buffer from the residential lot line or the abutting lot line, but perhaps the applicant can maybe discuss that a little bit more.
I mean, but, you know, I, I want to know, what am I going to be looking at when I look outside and I want to see the sun?
I wouldn't be able to answer that. I don't think anybody in this committee can.
Well, maybe we can ask staff, you know, if a building by right can be built, not just 40 feet away, but is, would it be allowed to be built right even closer to the house? By right, without even coming before us?
So to answer that question, I believe the height restrictions in the M1 zone, adjacent to residential are, is it 35 feet, Daniel?
So the, the maximum height for M, the M1 zone is normally unlimited?
Right.
But in this case, because it's adjacent to the residential, technically the maximum height through the municipal code would not be allowed to exceed 35 feet.
Yeah, thank you.
So a 35-foot building can be built abutting the property owner's property, actually?
A 35-foot building can be, I believe it would have to meet either a five-foot or a 10-foot setback, but technically?
Industrial buildings don't have setbacks from the property line, right?
Let me verify. So just to clarify, so if the building, I'm sorry, can we put a pause on her, we did, right, on her time? Yeah. If we put, sorry, because it's adjacent to this residential zone, it's limited to 30, 33 feet?
So the, the way the code reads is the maximum building height in the M1 zone will be unlimited, except if the law abuts a residential zone, then the maximum height shall be 35 feet or 25 feet if the building is within 15 feet of the residential property line.
So it would have to taper 25 feet and then 35 feet and then unlimited?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, when does it become unlimited?
The issue here is with, being adjacent to the single-family residential zone.
So it's 25 feet with?
So because the law is adjacent to or abuts the residential zone, then technically, normally the maximum height allowed would be 35 feet, but as a part of the conditional use process, as stated in the staff report, the planning commission can make the determination that height deviation would be permissible if it's deemed to be reasonable.
Oh, so it's 35 feet, but for a 15-foot section, it could only be 25 feet?
Correct.
So it's 25 feet and then 35 feet and that's it?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And by right, they wouldn't have to be coming for a conditioning use permit for an industrial building?
It depends on the type of use. In this case, because the usage required?
Other than this one, of course.
Then normally if a building or structure over 5,000 square feet were proposed, then it would still have to go through a site plan review process through the planning commission. So it just depends on what type of building?
Okay, thanks. Okay, so that's your question, that's your answer?
Okay, so what are they saying that?
That by right, they can build closer to your building, to your property line?
So in this case, at least based off of the way it's shown on the plans that were submitted, there is no new proposed, they're just proposing to keep the existing masonry wall there. And so from that rear property line, you would have a 10-foot, you would see trees or whatever landscaping the applicant puts in that, that buffer zone, but then there would be an additional 30 feet of separation before you would see the, the actual structure. So from your rear property line, your backyard, to where the structure begins, that, that would be a total of 40 feet separation. So you would be separated by 40 feet from your backyard property line to where the structure begins?
So they're going to be building more on this side?
So i- if you, if you see, can we pull up the plan again? So i- if you see on, on the plan that's reflected, can you see it from there?
I can see from there.
Okay. So that, that rear property line of the structure, it shows that there's an existing masonry wall in the property line? And so that green area, they're proposing a landscape buffer in between the back, so whatever landscaping were to be approved through the plant check process. And then there would just be a driveway for approximately 30 feet.
That gray, that gray shadow part is going to be all flat.
So th- this 30-foot buffer here, that, that's just the, the driveway. Cars would be able to drive through there, but the building would be separated 40 feet. So the, the actual building would begin at this property line here. So you would have a 40-foot buffer in between your rear property line and where the building begins?
Having any building behind that green line?
Not directly, no.
And even beyond that, you don't have a building for 30 feet beyond that, 10-foot and then another 30 feet, then you have a building?
The, the, the storage is going to be like in a rectangle shape?
Yes, th- this shape here is, is the store.
So all that's going to be driveway?
Yeah, the, the driveway, the driveway entry begins on this point on both sides and it's a huge, or a 30-foot loop. So that's the driveway for vehicles to drive through there, but there, there will be 40 feet in between your rear property line and, like I said, where the building begins. And then there's 30-foot fire lanes on, on both sides or 28-foot.
And where's the building?
That's the, this portion here. All of this is, is the building itself.
Oh, that's the building?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's going to block the sun.
Not until the evening.
Yeah, but I get the sun. It, it, it sits in the back of my house. So it comes in through the kitchen and through the den and into the rooms.
But again, by right, without any approval from the city, they can build closer to you. They are building further 40 feet away.
And it's going to be four stories high, right?
I believe that's the case, yes.
That's going to be pretty high.
So we're saying, at least me, I'm not sure about the other commissioners, this is somewhat of a control for you because they're before us. They're coming to make this request. Another building by right doesn't have to observe or come before us. They can build closer to you and taller. Not taller in general, but you know, taller than that 40-foot space where you have nothing.
I don't know why they're building storage, because we have storage in Monobello already in different areas.
We don't control the business model. They're only requesting the special conditions of approval from us.
Oh, wow.
Thank you so much for your time. We're, we're taking your, your, your comments into consideration. Thank you.
We do have one more speaker card and I believe it is Robert Ponet? Benoy? Thank you.
Good evening. My biggest concern on making a storage, I think it's great, but I think the storage place should have RV storage available if they're going to build such a place like this. Because as you know, in the city of Monobello, being a resident here for 57 years, born in Beverly Hospital, which is no longer, we've had ordinances passed recently that prevent parking. I, I can't even take my RV to O'Reilly's and stop on the street and go get some wiper blades without being in violation of the Monobello code for RVs. And the other storage places do have limited RV storage in Monobello, which is not enough. So I mean, I, I think that the planning commission needs to make RV storage available to any new storage facility that they build for the residents of the city to be able to own RVs and park their trailers or what have you without conditions of them getting towed or dealing with the city tickets and whatnot. That's my biggest concern right there. And I am a tenant at the building right next door, which did answer the question of our entrance gate. I believe we won't have a problem with that for, to get into our, our units. Is there any way that, that they could put, you know, you can reconsider so that there may be RV storage available for the residents of Monobello? Since there really isn't any storage facility and they made the ordinances? That's all I really have.
Yeah, please. Thank you for your comment, Mr. Chair. I will respond to the question. So self-storage facility by definition does not allow RVs or vehicle storage. It is a completely different use, the way we look at things in the, in the planning division. So that would not be allowed as part of this, the proposed use that's before the commission tonight.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's probably something the applicant can consider, you know, maybe you can do another study and who knows, whole separate business for you.
We do have an RV and boat business, but yeah, it's, it's tough on these smaller sites and circulation.
Gotcha, thank you. Do we have any more speakers, Dr. Palomino?
Mr. Chair, that concludes our speakers for tonight.
In that case, I'm going to go ahead and?
Sure.
Just, just one comment, I, I, while she was speaking, I looked up and, and I know it's a concern and, and I can understand the concern about view impacts, but I did look at, she said she's at 709 Taylor and that's on the northern, that actually straddles the mobile home park. So the dri- there is the driveway on the north side. So if you look at the site plan and as it relates to her home, there, there's, I, I, I think her view will be significantly less impacted than she's concerned about because of, A, the 40-foot setback, but also the, the almost 30-foot driveway around. So I just wanted to point, point that out, so.
I have a question for the applicant. I think Ms. Becker did talk about the concern with the access to her property and the common driveway that is shared with your property. And I think you mentioned that you were going to, that the driveway was going to stay, but if I look at the site plan, I see that there's a proposed precast wall there on the property line. And looking at these vehicles that are in the back, if that wall is built, they wouldn't have access to get back there. Am I not seeing this correctly?
Yeah, if you want to pull up the site plan, if I may, I can walk back there and point out exactly where their easement is and the access?
Okay.
If you guys are comfortable with that?
We're actually looking at it.
Well, yeah, up there.
So, may I come back there?
I believe that's okay, go ahead.
So Ms. Becker's easement is right over there. This is her property.
Right.
This, this is property line here, so there's access to all of us through here. We don't start the wall from left here and we have a gate. We have a gate. So this is where the easement ends, so it's completely open and unrestricted for access to her property.
So the, quick question, the utility easement is where the existing?
Ma'am, if you, if you could, if the chair would like, if you could approach, please provide your?
Okay, so in the middle of that driveway or portion where it says the utility easement, that's where the existing transformer is?
Right.
Where the beginning of the catering commissary is?
Right.
Okay, so we actually just are finishing a development and built a couple of buildings in that back portion, the east portion of our property, and we've already built a wall there as well. So we have an eight-foot wall.
We're not constructing any?
Back there is not the issue. It was the driveway from the beginning for the 10 units that are on the north side of 732 South Maple.
Unrestricted, no access.
Perfect. And so there's no gate? Is there then a gate going into the building area from? from that driveway?
Where if you pull in on the eastern end, where the easement ends, then...
On the back by Taylor? Okay, it would be nice to be able to see that.
Towards the tail.
Oh, okay. So on the north and the south sides, you don't have gates or entrances going into the building? It's all open?
This is the gate here, so all of the units have full access, no wall, no fence.
Okay. All right. Okay. Yeah, well, no, I have your card now, so you could send me, okay, perfect, thank you, people.
Thank you for clarifying that, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, now we can close the public comment. And it's open for discussion, commissioners, any thoughts? Well, I, for one, would like to maybe ask the architect in the group to see what her thoughts are on the, sort of the imposing nature of the building. It is a four-story building, after all.
Well, yes, definitely, after seeing the site plan of the surrounding residential homes that are there, we did notice that there is no obstruction for where the sun sets, and maybe that would be more of an analysis of, you know, where the sun hits, but other than that, it doesn't seem like it will affect the residential homes or any views, so I think that was also taken into consideration, because that's something that comes with the architectural planning of observations, analysis, before the design development.
Thank you, good to hear. And I also understand that the, our staff mentioned that there wouldn't be any windows on that side of the, of the building, so that's not to infringe onto the privacy of the residents. Okay, commissioners, I think we can maybe entertain a motion to perhaps adopt the item or approve the item? Adopt, I'm not sure.
I actually have a couple more comments, if I may.
Please, go ahead.
You know, these buildings are, you know, kind of intrusive in nature in terms of size when it comes to, you know, being in an area that is abutting of residential property, residential lots, I can see the, you know, the concern about having this dominating structure behind somebody's backyard. But recently, I'm transitioning, you know, from a house to another, as some of you know, and I've been frequenting a nearby storage facility, and I've been really impressed with the fact that it's a quiet, it's nice to have as a neighbor where they're quiet. I think the access to these facilities is limited after a certain hour, and even when I have been to the facility on the weekends or after work, they're extremely quiet and not affecting the nearby, in my case, residential zones much. I understand the size of something of this, you know, magnitude could be imposing, but if I was living nearby, a, you know, if I had my house nearby, I would want a building that's quiet, that is not creating that much noise, and that's not creating rodents or, you know, noise or the potential of fire that I, you know, stated earlier. That's, you know, something that I would consider, and I don't want to speak for some of the residents that may not like it, you know, but just kind of thinking about what this would look like in terms of, you know, being clean compared to a busy business where there's, you know, I just look at all the vehicles that are coming in and out of this facility at the moment, I would think that that level of noise during the day or even, you know, after hours, because I'm sure they don't close at 5:00, or early in the morning, would greatly affect neighbors as opposed to a storage facility that's just a big building. Again, just my opinion, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cuevas. Any other comments, commissioners? Can we entertain a motion from anyone?
I'll go ahead and motion to approve resolution number 0525, conditionally approving the demolition of all structures located on the project site and allowing the construction of an approximately 170,582 square foot, four-story structure for self-storage and office-related uses for the property located at 720 South Maple Avenue, and making related findings that the proposed project is consistent with the Montebello general plan. And determine and find that the project ENV number 0125 is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to SEQA Guideline Section 15332, in field development projects.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Thank you, can we get a roll call, please?
Of course. Chairperson Medina?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Lomely?
Aye.
Planning Commissioner Morales?
Aye.
Commissioner Cuevas?
Aye.
And motion passed.
Thank you so much, and I welcome Madison Capital, and thank you for investing in our city. With that, next item on our list is the, any planning commission orals? Nope, hearing none, in that case, I want to call this meeting adjourned.